Let it open up the meeting. Can I do that? All right.
Yeah, give me a second.
All right. Officially.
Officially official?
Officially officially official. All right.
Let me hit my start recording button here. We're still testing things, so.
You got it?
All right, Henry County Commission, Henry County, Missouri, Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty five. Third day of the April term, the Henry County Commission met pursuant to adjournment at the courthouse in Clinton, Missouri. Those members present were Jim Stone, Presiding Commissioner, Mark Larson, North District Commissioner Jake Bradley, South District Commissioner Kelly Merritt, Henry County Clerk. Nine AM Commissioner Stone brought the meeting to order. The agenda was approved as presented. The minutes from the Thursday, April third, twenty twenty five meeting were read. Commissioner Bradley made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion, motion carried. The minutes from the closed session Thursday, April third, twenty twenty five meeting were read. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the closed minutes. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion, motion carried. Expenditures for the following departments were approved to be paid: General County Government, Buildings and Grounds, Law Enforcement, GRS, Circuit Clerk, County Clerk, Emergency Management Commission, Road and Bridge, Inmate Security Fund Assessor, Elections. Commissioners discussed the township road boarding meeting that will be held April seventeenth, twenty twenty five at six PM at the Rotary Building. Commissioner Stone received a call from a citizen regarding Senate Bill one ninety. Commissioner Larson explained his thoughts on Senate Bill one ninety. He believes that a vote of the people would be the best way to get Senate Bill one ninety enacted in Henry County. There are still many questions on what tax the county can legally freeze without possible repercussions from taxing entities. Jim Sublet, Emergency Management, attended the meeting to update the commission on issues that arose last week with tornado sirens, emergency notifications, and how geographical zip code addressing can affect who gets alerts. Subby stated that he would rather have the sirens go off and not be needed than not have them go off and it be needed. Subby has been working with the National Weather Service and will continue to work with them. He shared that after last week's discussion regarding safe shelter spaces that they received an email from Mark Manuel of the City of Clinton that stated that it needs to meet codes to be opened as a safe space. Jim's concern is that he believes that the commission needs to be working with the City of Clinton as Emergency Management has worked hard with various communities to bring them together and believes Emergency Management shouldn't be the middleman between the county and the city. It was suggested that Emergency Management look into a grant for a community emergency shelter. However, the federal government has cut off grants for Emergency Management. Commissioner Stone expressed his reservations about using the Emergency Management Building as a shelter due to the liability it could put on the county. He wants to make sure the county, the county is protected. Jim Sublet stated that he is going to remove the Henry County Jail from the safe shelter list that Emergency Management puts out. At ten oh one AM, Mike Bilbrook, Aaron Brown, LaKrisha Gray, and Reagan Landis attended the commission meeting. Bilbrook stated that he was here to start a conversation about the opioid epidemic within the county, but specifically within our, within the country. That's what that was supposed to say. Country. But specifically within our county. He presented the commission with documents regarding the ten sixty four Defender. The ten sixty four Defender is a narcotics analyzer that can identify chemicals. Mike shared that the, shared the benefits of having the Defender ten sixty four. LaKrisia shared that she has been to training for the Defenders ten sixty four. She shared the device would help with the backlog of lab-based drug tests that stall the justice system. LaKrisia explained that she investigated the legitimacy of the device after Clinton PD started using their ten sixty four Defender and how it can be used in court. She shared that using the device helps our community by getting addicts helped faster and by getting court cases moving forward. Commissioner Larson made a motion to approve the purchase of a Defender ten sixty four for the sheriff's office. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion, motion carried. Was a roll call vote, Stone yes, Larson yes, Bradley yes. Prosecuting attorney LaKrisia Gray and Jen Mayer attended the meeting to discuss storage solutions for the prosecuting attorney's office. LaKrisia stated that the ultimate goal would be to have all the documents digitized, but she does not have the staff to dedicate someone to doing that for her office at this time. She would like to know a timeline of when they would need to get the files moved out of the old jail. There is no specific time at this point. Dennis shared a storage space that he has available. LaKrisia is going to check out the storage space and see if it will work for her. Jim Stone asked LaKrisia about the liability of using the old Emergency Management Building as a storm shelter. Dennis shared that the MoDOT Bridge Inspector Aaron Rider will be in to discuss the inspections on April twenty second at nine thirty AM. Dennis stated that we have some roads in the northwest part of the county that have washouts, log jams on bridges and culvert issues from the storms last week. He shared that MoDOT approved Southeast ninety nine hundred Road in Leesville Township for bridge replacement. He also made commissioners aware of a box culvert in Big Creek Township that has a wall that has split diagonally and is caving in. He stated that they will not be replacing it with another box culvert, but they will be replacing it with a pipe. Dennis shared again that he spoke with Dylan Roder about the MOU for the Corps of Engineers. Jim McHadden, landowner of, off of Booth Road, was in to talk to commissioners about the semi trucks that are coming down Booth Road. Mr. McHadden shared that he had spoken with Clinton PD, the Sheriff's Office, Clinton Township, Road and Bridge, and now the commission. He is concerned with the safety of the individuals in the community. He would like something to be done, a limit to be put on the road or speed bumps. Commissioner Bradley is going to talk to Clinton Township and Dennis Bowers, Road and Bridge supervisor, to see if they have any options. Commissioners continued discussion on Booth Road. Commissioner Larson made a motion to adjourn the meeting at eleven thirty AM. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion, motion carried.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
So, second. Motion made, second, accept the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carried.
Okay, we don't have any close session minutes today.
Oh, yeah.
First time in a while? All right. So Amy is working on printing the bills. As I said, give us grace.
Ah. All right.
We basically fielded election phone calls all day yesterday.
Okay.
Looking to see if it's safe.
I make sure it's safe first.
Okay.
Good morning, Mark.
Well, I don't want to say that.
Well, Mark here on deck. Since you're here.
Are the bills ready?
No, the bill's up here yet.
Oh. We got explanation on the tornado sirens.
Oh, wow. Barely outside of Polygon.
Yeah. Corner, corner, right?
Yep, just caught the corner of Clinton.
Mm-hmm.
So what National Weather Service sent over, the communications said it since it touched the Clinton.
Ah.
That's why they sent them all further to the Clinton.
Good, it's good reason?
You're better off being safe.
Yep. So we picked up the grant yesterday. We got four thousand dollars for weather radios, those are the weather radios we're going with. We'll have those Monday or Tuesday.
Cool.
Before the next severe weather hits Thursday.
We got one.
It's Thursday, huh? I'm not sure what day it's supposed to be.
Those work really well.
Yeah.
They do, I've got one.
And those actually go off the Polygon also.
There's two different types here, which ones do you own?
The windup. They're rechargeable.
Oh, okay.
How do you close it? Somebody told me and I forgot. That does.
All right. Is it just?
Ouch. Pretend you didn't see that.
I actually didn't see it.
So. To close the pen.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I'm got. That's, that's how you close it.
I thought there was a button somewhere.
Far if you hadn't broken.
Yeah. I'd have been in trouble.
Those would be nice already.
Yes, they will. So, and that's your all's copy.
All right.
Is that, uh, where we handing those out at? Here? What'd you, what'd you all do last time?
We sent them to the radio station.
KD, KD.
Yeah.
Well, you're a good, a good option too, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, we can split them. Um, we want to try to get them farther out in the community. We thought about some of the, take them out to some of the state to, to the different cities where they pick them up at sea hall.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah.
Get them farther out in the, into the counties.
Yeah.
Do you know when they're available?
Yeah, Monday or Tuesday. They're gonna bring them down to Harrisonville. We're gonna meet them in Harrisonville. So we can skip the shipping charges and everything. Like I said, come down from Kansas City and meet us halfway.
Maybe even some fire departments.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Do you have anything else to?
Uh, the old jail, have we decided what we're doing with that yet?
I was gonna ask you, did y'all, y'all talked to Mark? Did you visit with Mark?
I visited with Mark the other day. I've got a, uh, did you?
I visited with him after y'all visited. I wanted to hear y'all's, because we talked. He said, there's some grant money available. And he said, did he give you some?
No.
Or Subby, maybe Subby.
Well, we've been in talk with the state. Because all the FEMA money and all that's.
Well, yeah, but barely and, and according to Mark, there's some places we can look for some money.
Yeah, the state's got a couple of places that we're gonna try.
See, Mark and Subby talked us talking the other day and they've got, Subby's kinda working on something with Mark as far as where all the grants can be found at.
Right.
And then, uh, I've got a
You've got a list, you have a list, what you have to have to make.
Yeah, we have it, we got our copy.
And the big thing, I visited with him, with Mark. Mark said, Jim, I just don't think, to get it up in shape and then to get everything, because you gotta have exits certain way. Gotta have food.
I should have went farther. We, we are gonna, we're gonna pursue these grants.
Okay.
But for the near future purposes.
If, I tell you what, your churches. Churches, some of them, if they'll do it, it'd be good. Be a lot better.
Mark also said, if, you know, when it comes down to it, we can't put the sign on there that says it's a tornado shelter, but it can be used as a shelter, you know, I mean, when they were at kind of thing. So.
The only thing, like I say, somebody's gonna ask either to manage and to watch it, because you still got liability. Once you open, once you open it up, you just open your door. Because I don't care if somebody gets hurt in there.
Maybe my, my biggest fear, but I haven't been, I haven't walked around in the cells or.
Well, the big thing is, it's gotta be a lot of little rooms to get, people are gonna be standing up, you're not gonna have a lot of.
Yeah.
That's the only thing.
You got a lot of files in there too, the.
Yeah, everything, that's all behind double doors, locked, chained. They can't get into the cells.
But you haven't got, you haven't got very much, that much room in that building to really do.
That's what we were wondering, just.
And the bad thing, something did happen to the front, to that. But if you had, if something happened to that one door up there, getting out of it would be a problem. Because if you couldn't get out both sides.
Sounds to me like the answer to your question is probably no.
I'm afraid of that, I, I.
I'm just, I'm scared to death to put a bunch of people in and have one way out.
What do you think?
That's what I'm hearing.
I mean, there is a legit risk. I mean, there is. But then you also have the legit risk, and I don't know, being the county, are we responsible for having someplace for people to go? So it's, it's a catch twenty-two. You got a risk on one side and then you, you know, say you've got a bunch of people up here to get hurt and some nickel lawyer goes, hey, why didn't the county have someplace for these people to go? You, and I, I see both sides.
And then the municipal part, where, where do they come in?
Right.
You got also, you got the city to deal with. Because everything you do, you have to go through there too.
I think I would push, I mean, I know it's not gonna solve your problem Thursday.
Right.
But I would really push for the grant, go after that really hard and see, and then see what we can actually do that's gonna be legit. I would probably keep people out of it.
And Mark, you brought up.
Unfortunately.
About churches and different ones there. He said that'd be where, because they aren't gonna get sued, you're not gonna have any of the problems, and they got more exits.
We, we are pursuing the grants, so.
Okay.
We're just having, the next biggest thing on the grant is location wise, where we're gonna put it.
That's gonna be, and that's what I asked Kim, and that's something you'll have to work with city on that too, on that. You guys work with Mark a lot on, on a lot of it, when you go to doing something on municipal and if we can get a lot somewhere.
There's a lot of logistics. If it goes on the courthouse property, then that's county, but if it goes in.
There you go.
Anywhere else?
Anywhere else, it's the city.
Yeah, that's right. That's the way it works.
But should the city be the one paying for the grants? Versus.
Who, who owns the, who owns the jail? Is that the city or is that the county?
That's ours.
That's the county.
We're gonna need it over to.
So.
I agree.
I mean, you've got room behind there, don't you? What, because my, my other question was when we were all talking about this, when we were using that jail, if you had a tornado, say you, you knew there was a tornado coming, what'd you do with the inmates?
Oh, they stayed in themselves.
They just stayed in themselves. So you, you could have faced a lawsuit from that, the same thing, and the same thing over here with whatever they've got in this. So seems like to me, if it's, that's owned by the county, why not put it on county property? That actually alleviates any issues. Now, I don't know if Aaron and I don't wanna step on his toes, but if you have a tornado coming, you'd be able to put your inmates in there also, because if it hits that jail and you've got people in there and you're responsible for them, there's a lawsuit.
I don't know what standards the jail was built to. I know the communications building was built to.
Yeah, the communications, you're, you're, you're good.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about the jail.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know about jail. I know nine one one, that one is for sure, and I was thinking over to Elk's some part of that, and I, don't ask me why, but, and I don't know that, so I don't wanna say anything here. But the only other thing I'm saying in that lot, we've got one across from Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, we own that lot.
Yeah, we own that lot. Across the street.
Where the dog, the dog.
Oh, yeah, right there, okay.
Oh.
That'd be a decent spot.
That's where, that's what Subby was asking me yesterday. He's like, so we don't go on the courthouse or our county property, and the city wouldn't be responsible for doing the grant, but if, so.
And I'm not sure where you're working together, they'll let us do that. If we wanted to do it.
And with the, uh, honestly, Clinton's probably the best place to have it because it's central to, if it's gonna hit Windsor, they can come down this way as far as tornadoes.
They've got quite a few churches in Windsor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That you could.
No, we were, it's short term, if we had any ideas, but that's fine. We're, we're playing on.
Sounds like you should still just send them out to their hospital.
Yeah.
Probably Jim, I think.
The intersection.
That's right. The hospital or?
The intersection to get to the hospital. Uh, the Elk's building, I'm pretty sure it's got a sign on there that says it's a storm shelter.
I, and I, I need to ask, ask one of Kenny or one of them over there that knows for sure.
Talking with Mark, he said they don't have any storm shelters within the city of Clinton.
Okay, then they don't.
I could have swore I seen it.
I know, one time, see, the senior center was wanting to do it out there. They was wanting to make, had to get one, but they had some issues on, uh, in part it was room and all the, you have to have everything set up in there. And if you're gonna, if you're gonna have a certified place for them to go.
Yeah, there's actually a county in Europe that does it, and that has the, and there's the.
County, there's places that seemed like there's, there's a couple that they can buy them from.
Yeah, there's one in Europe that does the, that does.
But that'd be.
I got my clarification, so.
Good.
Start the next week through the end of May is gonna be a lot of storms.
Is that what they're saying?
Could you stop?
Well, I can tell you the budget like.
Really need to go hunt mushrooms and the rain's keeping the ground too cold.
We found them earlier last weekend at the farm.
Yeah, well, I've been a little too busy though.
Not sure about.
I want to not be busy.
Y'all got anything for me?
Anything else?
Um, flood payment, the state will be in sometime either next week or the following week. Do some quality control.
There, I told you what spots.
I, I got a list. I've been out visiting. I'll, I'll be back out here in about forty minutes.
Well, because the last time they done, they had a list and you had to
Yep.
take them to that, whatever place it was and show them what you did.
That's one of them.
Yeah.
Out of Ford, out of Covens.
Yeah.
Please hit black button order.
No.
Hey, I got you. Also, do you have an MFA card?
Yes.
Do you have it on you?
No. It's in the glove box.
I just, I need to know what the last digits are. It's okay, not, not, I don't need to know that right now, but at some point in time. I have receipts that I need to match up and I just, I just don't know which ones are and which ones really are, so I wanna make sure if it's yours or.
Yeah, I used it once.
It's probably yours, because I have a receipt number and I don't.
And so on, it has one deal on it.
Twenty-four gallons. That's mine.
Oh, look.
But I don't have anything else. Oh, well, I say I don't have anything else. Um, DNR was expecting their results back yesterday afternoon or this morning. They're gonna share them with us.
Yeah.
Everdude is not gonna send them preliminary results over. They're gonna wait till their finals are in and then they're gonna send their finals over, which should be next week.
Everybody.
And we should have our finals.
Next week too. Everybody should be about the same time. Because these all taking the same time.
Think that's it now.
Huh? Now you're done?
I think I'm done now.
Okay, well, we got no business here, okay. Uh, DNR's version.
I'm gonna go see if checks are done.
How about, uh, Red Talks?
Oh, I've been out.
Forget it. Take it off?
Yeah, go ahead, take it off.
All right.
The do you know, and this may not be you, this may be the Health Department, how many, uh, trying to figure out a good way to say this, for a septic system, how many bathrooms are allowed on one septic system?
That's, that's on the Health Department.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know.
It used to be Gary French.
It is Gary French.
That's who it used to be, and he's still there.
Yeah, he's still there.
Fred Bowler at one time been some over there too.
Yeah, it's, it's Gary though.
We had ours put in, I wanna say it was a.
Isn't it three toilets per thousand gallon?
I was wanting to say it was three or four.
And then you have so many laterals, you gotta have to run out to get rid.
And it's gotta be installed by.
Yeah.
Or at least inspected by the Health Department.
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
It's gotta be installed by, uh, somebody with a license.
Somebody licensed.
License, okay, okay. That's, that's my question.
Yeah, they have to be permitted.
Yeah.
Now, how many of them are going up?
I didn't know if it was bathroom, square footage, how that worked exactly.
I think it's the amount of people that's.
I'd say it's based off the people. It's based off the people. It's the number of people per house.
Because we got like.
Well, if you've got a community, let's say.
Well, there's a lot of them go to, uh,
Lagoons. But you, yeah, but see, even then, then you run into the scenario of your lagoon has to be so far away from something. So it's gotta be so far away from your well, water, whatever, so that, I'm just, I.
But I don't know how, I don't know about septic.
Figure out.
I knew that'd take.
Doesn't seem like it's right. So.
Your neighbor may find that.
Yeah.
Good boy.
You may not have to worry about that, I'll tell you. Unless you, maybe you, is that what you was planning on? If you've got that block, just put it a little tiny out.
That's what I've got going on, I think, next door to me.
That's possible.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what it is, but the one down the road, there has been some allegations, uh, about it. And I haven't, I, I need to find some stuff out, a little bit more about it, the family. Community, community kind of thing. There's little houses. There's twenty-four of them in there. And I'm still looking for a lagoon or.
Oh, mine.
Yes.
While Kelly is collecting bills, I'm gonna use.
That's fertilizer for that hayfield.
Pardon me?
Fertilizer for the hayfield.
Yeah, yeah. I may, I may have it next door to me too.
They have three or four different places, Bob.
One's next, one's next to my office.
Well, ours, I think, is chicken. Chicken place, but I can't even figure out, they got water for chickens.
Dear God, have you seen all the chicken houses in the county now?
Oh, I don't.
I've been out doing this flood plan stuff and there's more chicken houses than there are regular houses now.
There's a lot of them. Lot of them up. I see them going. And you know what? Years ago, when they had the chickens and turkeys, and I've seen a lot of them tore down now.
We can increase our population in Henry County if we can count the chickens.
Uh-oh. Call him back.
If y'all are going, we're gonna go visit some flood plans that, because they're gonna be here in a week or two.
Oh, you think y'all have to double check every.
Yeah.
Yep. I think, I'll tell you what, when we done before, that's, that's pretty nice. Always pretty nice.
Yeah.
Unless you get somebody to scout on it. They've, as we have given them.
Our, our records even in the past hasn't been addressed for a very long time.
Well, that's, now they will look at that.
Yeah.
I'm telling you.
So.
I've, like I said, there's certain jobs that need to be done. That's pretty important. Even though some of it, I, I wondered, I would stay hitchhanded.
I'm out.
All right, bye.
Have a good day.
Bye.
Oh, my God.
Nolly.
Um, he's done that to me too, Jake.
Give him a hug.
Bad enough that the deputies were like, what's going on?
That's a terrible look to open a door and see.
See?
Now everybody wants to, what they yelling.
That's what happened to me too.
I was getting very pushed, but it's always being attacked.
I was being attacked.
It's on him.
Okay, uh,
What it's all about.
We can take off, uh, uh, Nick. Red Talks Arena.
Okay.
And Stonebridge, still I haven't heard nothing from them on there.
Sure.
I think they have something set up in May. It's just on here because it seemed like it had to go, it's in quarters. It's something, I remember something being in there, on there in May, so.
Okay, all right.
I wouldn't take it off yet. But you want me to take off, um,
And the DNR.
Red Fox, what about, that's what I was gonna say, what about the DNR inspection?
What was that on eleven oh one, DNR inspection on eleven oh one and Southwest nine hundred?
Dennis mentioned that in the last meeting. Something about bridge inspections in the last meeting I was seeing.
Yeah, we have a meeting with MoDOT regarding bridge inspections next, on the twenty-second.
Maybe that's where it's gonna be covered.
I wonder. I couldn't, I couldn't.
I can't remember the road numbers that he, uh, probably got it written down somewhere.
I'm sure Dennis will be in. We can ask him if we can take that off there.
Yep. We'll find out. Hey, how'd the election turn out?
Um.
I'm, I'm telling you.
Pretty sad turnout.
People, uh, percentage was.
It was twelve point one six percent of the county showed up.
That's it?
We had eighteen, just over eighteen hundred votes cast countywide.
Binton or Bates only had like six percent.
Yeah.
That was the worst.
So what that means is we have a lot of one vote races, you know, that were sixteen votes, seventeen votes. We had ties.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
So how?
Interesting, huh?
How was the tie settled?
Um, it really depends on the entity. There's different, kind of different rules for.
Okay.
But like, take, um, City of Calvin, just for example, because we do have a tie. But like, take, um, City of Calvin, just for example, because we do have a tie over there for aldermen. The city, I just say, here's your results, and then they're in charge of doing whatever they have to do. But there is statute that allows them to do a, um, of course, one, one candidate can concede and then call, you know, agree. You can have it and then that ends it. Or they can actually flip a coin, draw straws, roll dice, whatever they want to do. They can, they can take chance.
Boxing gloves?
Gamble. They, they can.
Solution to Calhoun, they're large.
You're the card store.
They can call for a runoff election, meaning there'd be a special election just for those candidates, um, that will be held, that could be held shortly after this election. It really just depends on the candidates and-
Let everybody decide.
That they decide, the candidates ultimately have the final say in whether they want an election or whether they want to take a chance or quit.
Well, we talked about it in the house, Jenny noticed it, she's like, well, I'm not, I'm not sure.
We haven't done our verification yet, that's, that's done tomorrow, but we'll take a look at some of those and hand count them, just, I mean, we don't believe there's anything wrong because all the numbers match and everything, but we'll just hand count them to give, you know, the, not, just to verify what you see is what you're, what is right, so... Some of those ones that are tied and- With such small turnout, it's easy to do that.
Yep.
Put people's mind at rest.
Yeah.
I can understand that.
Well, we're required to do it, verification anyway, so we're just gonna go ahead and verify those too.
Did the trial upstairs, is it done?
Mm-hmm.
So they're getting ready for the next one coming up?
I'm assuming. I asked what, I asked downstairs when the next one was and make the guy hit the door and they didn't remember, so I don't know when the next one's coming.
I just remember Brandon saying the next three weeks, I couldn't remember if this was the two week one or the single.
I guess that was quite a trial to hear.
It wrapped up Friday, I think so.
Yep.
Oh, that doesn't all go together.
I was gonna say, they don't do that, do they?
Something looks weird, doesn't it? What do we got here?
Boy, here's one.
What is this?
It's around here. That must be two in, brother.
I think that was one with the-
No, that goes with, there's where your paperclip is.
Okay.
That's the end of your cart payout digit, these receipts, because it's ACH deposited, that's, so we've paid out your cart to honey.
Done.
So I'm gonna mark them as paid today. Four ten. I feel like April just started and we're already on the tenth day. I can just move right here.
Hmm?
Put my stuff on over here. Marker, you threw all the bills, I can talk to you then. Um, I got a call from the sheriff's office yesterday, Rob, and he asked about a speed limit sign on Northwest one fifty road in what he thought was White Oak Township. Um, he wanted to know if we had been notified that the speed limit had changed, or if there was an ordinance, because it's not enforceable unless law enforcement's notified that. And I guess Davis School had seen it, well, I called Dennis and he didn't know nothing about it, so I called Darwin Dahl with White Oak Township and he said, I'll go out and look and see where it came from, what it is, because he didn't know about it either. And so I called Rob back and he said that one of the deputies lived out there and said that somebody had actually built speed bumps in the road too, so they suspect that it was an individual who may have put up a speed limit sign and built speed limit, or built speed bumps. So I talked to Darwin and Dennis again and told them what I had found out, Darwin called me this morning and said he couldn't find it anywhere on his road, so I'm not sure that it's in White Oak Township, but I wanted you to be aware that there's an issue up there somewhere with speed bumps and speed limit signs and that Dennis was gonna go out this morning and try to find it. The Davis school bus driver is the one who called it in, is my understanding, so, it's, it's in that area up there, it could be... But Darwin said he drove his road, his roads in White Oak and he couldn't find it, so... I'm not sure where it's at, Northwest one fifty, the deputy was supposed to get me a better exact location, um, but I haven't heard from him yet this morning, so...
Kelly?
Yes.
You're good. Come from the magnet. It's come from somewhere. What can I, what can I say?
That's a fun game, now I got to keep you busy for a while.
Yeah, I think, well, I never got it off there, I need to watch that.
I just wanted you to know that was going on up there, there's some questions.
Okay, thank you.
I have no answers yet, but lots of questions.
That can get a little tense, kinda like our boy down here on one hundred, built speed bump.
Well, that's, that's what they said.
Yeah, we had a guy build speed bumps one other time, in our, we had somebody build, put about three speed bumps over there in our area. He definitely wanted to slow down.
Oh, wow.
Go airborne.
I know at one point I think there was some down, somebody put in Leesville to, I mean, it happens in a while, but... Probably be a liability for the township and it eventually fall back to the county.
Yep.
Also, one of the people that we called to interview, and I don't know if we talked about this, we're gonna add him right after the bid opening next week because he couldn't make it today because of work, so we're gonna add him right after the bid opening next week. Hey, Jim, you got all of those, I have to thumb through them to make sure you got this one, good job.
I figured I missed one. I'm bad about that.
Well, when you got a lot, I'm gonna say.
Yeah. I'm gonna put them there just. Okay, let's see. Okay, and... Uh, we can take subby off here too. April eighth, passed.
I don't have that on mine, are you looking?
You don't?
The right one.
Huh?
Looking at the April tenth agenda?
April tenth agenda is what I'm looking at. It's not on yours?
Do what?
No, that's not the right one. That's April eighth agenda. You'll, you'll figure it out.
You can fix it.
Ten, cool. Four ten twenty-five.
Well, you don't have them in order.
I don't put them in, I, it puts them in whatever, I just save it and it throws it in whatever order it throws them in.
We got one today, I'll have to watch it. Okay, Stonebridge, that's it, you already got the room face.
So we have-
Dennis neither, next one.
No, we have Great River at eleven.
Jake?
Uh-huh.
Kinda give it a subdate.
Yeah, he said it wouldn't take very long.
No, give it a subdate, probably the email he sent, I got that. Oh, uh, there's something I was gonna ask you. Can you make me a file over here and put, uh, somewhere, I wanna put Casey here.
You want a file for Casey here?
That way, because I'm always getting emails and I'll just put them all in that box, that way I don't have to worry about it.
Look at you coming around to my side of things.
And did Shannon get ahold of you?
Yes.
Okay. I sent her, I sent her everybody's email, that new email address, he and I had her correct mine, so we got back on speed. Something about Grant.
Mm-hmm.
Well, who's this guy?
Just gonna get some coffee.
Look what he's doing, Kelly, what do you think? Kelly, should we kick him out, is that it? Is that what you want to do?
I'm gonna use up my suite while I have some air.
I don't think he's going down there.
Uh, I was trying to figure out that software. It's a struggle.
It is?
Yeah. Return, you get escape, you go forward, you hit end, like, what? It's just little things you gotta learn, like, the little-
Well, you all see our software.
Secrets are.
Yeah.
Our software, yeah. Is it good to you, David?
Huh? Yeah, no, it's, it's, we're gaining, we're gaining, I'm just, you gotta, gotta learn to read.
I'm putting everything at their fingertips right, he just hasn't figured it out yet.
Yeah, they're a work in progress.
Yep.
We all are. We all are, do you see your Casey here file there?
Well, it's all in here.
Yep, over here.
Yep.
See?
Couldn't wait to do that, could you?
I go with him, is that where I gotta get, oh, can I show it? Over there.
We can all see it.
There.
All, all for us to see it.
Now, okay, now, that's good, I, I just, by the way-
Now you can drop your files in there.
That's it. So everything I get from Casey here, I'm gonna put in that. Because, believe me, I get enough emails from there. Does you have thirteen's?
Uh-huh, do you not see the file?
I have not on it.
Oh, okay. And Jake, I will get with you on-
Did you find out something?
I didn't, no.
Okay.
No, I, I honestly haven't had-
You're fine, I didn't figure you'd have-
Anything, yeah, I will.
Off the top of your head.
But you putting it in that will remind me to-
Okay.
Check into it, I just-
Did you see that I added a couple other questions?
Can you put that in chat?
Yeah.
Where you have to do that?
Went to the chat and I was-
He was talking to me individually.
Oh, I didn't know, I, I was just looking.
Basically asking about how to turn a private road into a public road.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's, if it's-
There's a, uh... Statute?
Yeah, there is, I just haven't had time to-
Well, I was reading, I just not quite understanding.
You probably looked it up for me before.
I think I have a file somewhere downstairs that has some of that stuff in there, but, and I will get, I will get there.
No worries, Kelly, no worries.
But there is a procedure.
Yeah, there's a whole procedure about it. And I think, like anything else, it may start with a petition.
That's what I've understood.
Yeah.
But, uh... I, I need to, I'm gonna call the, this, the gentleman back and I just was kinda wanting to get some confirmation for him, and I wasn't real for sure on the whole statute and procedure thing too.
Sure. It's basically, I mean, pretty much, it's just like closing the road, you have to follow all those things, it has to be published, you have to have a hearing, you have to, I mean, the whole process is basically gonna be the same.
Okay.
It's, it's not as simple as, we want this road opened up to the public now, because-
That's how, what I figured.
Because somebody has to maintain it, somebody has to get paid for, I mean, so, yeah, there's a hole. And turning a private into a public might actually be more difficult than turning a public into a private, just because...
Right.
You can go build a road anywhere and then be like, hey, now I want you guys to take care of it.
Well, that's just it, we have been, they have been taking care of it.
I figured that's where it was at.
Yeah, so it's been maintained like it's a public road, but... Proceed with caution.
It also has to mean, I mean, meet county road standards, I mean-
Which I'm guessing it does. But-
Yeah, yeah, sticky.
Yeah.
That's in a special road district, right?
That's why I didn't know if that was maybe different.
More sticky, it keeps getting better.
Yeah, yeah. But I do, I wanna, like, it's a special?
Special road district.
I think the special is the one that decides that.
I think so too.
Because whoever's president of that special is actually the commissioner.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there are certainly different rules for the special road districts then.
There is.
Big, big.
See, that's, that's the whole question behind it, is, they have been maintaining it like it was. On our maps, it says it's a private, so Dennis changed it, well, we haven't been collecting anything off that, that road for however, however long it's been-
Right.
A private, so...
Are they wanting to get money for it?
If it's up to them, they can continue to maintain it if you ask me, because they are their own private jurisdiction.
Money for it.
Yeah, but they're not gonna receive anything on maintaining it, and that would be, I mean, I guess if they've already set that precedence down there, I wouldn't want to do that in a special that wasn't, and then all of a sudden now, I mean, then you're really-
So that's why I was curious about turning it over to a public where, I don't, I didn't even know if they would be able to collect, uh, you know what I mean?
Right, how would we get it on our road inventory, is what you're asking.
Yes.
Are they wanting to, I mean-
No, this is just a solution that I've thought up in my head to-
Just question.
Offer, yeah, uh-
Where they can get money for it.
Yeah, because if they're gonna maintain it and they wanna, they wanna continue to maintain, I don't know if they do, but if they can be able to receive money for it, I would imagine they would be willing to continue to maintain it.
I would think that they would have to pass something and then bring it to us, to Oakwood.
They have to bring it up to specs, what we say a road has to be.
It's also a special though, Jim, it's in a special road district, so there's different rules.
Yeah, but I think specs-
Yeah, they'd still have to have the specs, we're just saying that.
Hell, I have to go through the same deal.
I just wanted you to know it was in a special road district, not just a-
Yeah, well, that changes it.
Yeah.
There's more questions I hadn't heard.
I'm good, thank you.
But, uh... Yeah, I just, I don't know, it's like, cause it's a sticky situation.
Yeah, because it'd be nice if they're gonna maintain it, they want to, at least they get paid for it.
That's, that's the only thing I was thinking.
And, and if it was a private road, there are special road districts, so they're their own little beautiful thing out there.
Yeah, that is their own thing.
Can the landowners pay the special road district to maintain it?
That's what I was gonna say. That, I think I even mentioned that in one of, my contract-
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
With.
Between the special and the landowner.
That, that's really my biggest question, because that would be the easiest. Solution, you know?
Yeah.
Just have a contract written up between them, the special, and they. They can, uh. Divvy it up from there.
Do I need to do anything with this DocuSign? Teams, it comes up before I'm on. Here.
I don't even know what that is.
Uh, so whenever we do anything and sign, we can sign it. Just click on it.
That's an email from DocuSign.
Yeah.
What is?
Delete it, I don't know.
Did you open it? Don't click it? Oh, it's just an advertisement, I would delete it.
Well, that's probably, I haven't been getting advertisement on that stuff. Okay, I'm gonna put that, I'm, that case here, there's a CBD, uh, grants, CBDG grants.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put all that in the case areas, so y'all know. Go there to look for it. In fact, and then on you, what's the name, your, your screen deal, your printing?
My business?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Whiskey Timber.
Whiskey Timber.
Yeah, uh, Whiskey Timber.
They're making barrels?
I make things out of barrels.
Hey, no, I mean, I, the main reason, because I already got this on a, the tag and the. Case in board and the club lights, put you down as a owner.
Oh.
You can do that, and that'll way you're on the tag. And then you'll get that.
I'm with you now.
It's all the same.
Okay.
Then, cuz just like, that's how we had to switch switching around, I was the only one, and I kinda bet it, I wasn't really. Able, but they let me do it at the time, and I've been there, but I don't have anything other than that. Now I'm had to go back casing her, so now I want it. Until I do get that handled, but I'm gonna get that handled this year.
Okay.
Get it out of it. But I think it's something that's, uh, some of it's Daniel Portman on my on tag, that's, and that's, I've already set the.
You said Daniel Portman?
Huh?
Daniel Portman?
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
Daniel.
Dank, oh, gotcha, nope, you're good.
Sorry.
My hearing ain't. Kinda had that. For me, I don't.
Well, let me get that, I was switching, I was gonna do that here. Let's try moving that. I could go back to moving. Uh, moved. Oh, uh. God, I'm gonna send that. If I wanna move that, we may, so.
That's just your email, Jim, that you're in.
Well, yeah, but that's, I'm wanting to move it over to the, uh, I wanna move this email over to, cuz this came in, uh, Henry Como. And I thought I could just move it over to case here. Oh.
Is it, is it a document, or you wanting to move the whole?
I wanna, yeah, the whole email would go with it, because it has everything attached to it.
Well, it's not an email. That's a file, I'll have to ask Chuck how to do that, because I don't know if you can, because that's a, that, in Teams you can put files.
Okay, well, can I do it on it, then why not put me a, uh, over here in our Henry Como? So all of us see it, case here.
In your email.
An email.
I don't know that everybody can see in your email.
Again?
I, we can't see your email, can you scan it?
I don't know.
I can forward it to you.
Can you scan it?
I can forward it all to you.
You can do that if you want.
Yeah.
But I just thought if we.
Yeah, he could print and save it all as a file.
That's what I was gonna say, scan it and then then put it in the file.
But I don't think there's anything you can do to allow anybody else to read your email.
The attachments to Teams.
I tell you what.
Yes.
If that's good.
Well. Really, that'd probably do everything.
Probably, if it's just a attachment thing.
Yeah, see, there it is. This is, now, this is from Ashley, but the, the, this was what you learned at the CB. On the economic development deal.
Oh, yeah, you could, you can, uh, upload that to Teams.
I just thought it'd be good, cuz this would give you all of your grant money, different places you can get and get.
Yeah.
That's how Shannon picks up on that, and they went to some.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be really good information.
But I think it's good to, everybody needs knowing, especially the commissioners, that's just my opinion. Okay, Ken, uh, now I can upload this, oh crap, y'all, that's. Could be out of my. Yeah, well, it might be easier for me to just send it to you.
Might be easier for you to do it, Jake.
Yeah, send me, I'll upload it to Teams for you.
And I tell you what, but I do want, hey, Kelly, on my email, put a case here, cuz I can't, I I thought, well, I could have kept it. My office, like store, I can just click on it and make a new folder.
Yeah, you can do that on your email.
Yeah, but I can't do it here.
Not in Teams, but you can do it on your email, so.
That's.
I forget these dumpings are touchscreen.
Never worked.
Go click your inbox right there and right-click it. And create a new folder.
Okay, there we go, I have it, that's what I was trying to do the other day.
Is that the one about the grants?
Yeah. Cuz if I put it there, I wanna get it, and but I'm thinking I'm just gonna send it to Paul too.
And you're putting that in the casings, your file?
Yeah. Sure got it.
An email?
Yeah.
I gotta get it.
An email. Now I only save one other one too. And then I'll, cuz Shannon sends me a lot of this stuff too, but you should be getting it anyway now.
Yeah.
If I see, if I see both y'all's names, I'll, it'll work. But still, I'll put it in, I'll put it in my file. Oh, Kelly?
Yes?
I wanted to know about this one. On. You sent out. Money, donation, donation.
Oh, about the sheriff's office, the sheriff's employees, what do you wanna know?
Is it, who is it? I was like, I can't remember the name, but anyway, what happened?
I don't have any idea, I just forwarded the email from Rob. And I only forwarded it to elected officials and employees.
Okay.
It was, it was just a fire, I mean, it was a house fire, that's in the email.
Yeah. On Friday, Michael Stur, said.
Yeah.
I'm probably just gonna check out.
I don't know when Rob's playing, I'm picking it up, I told him I would only take from employees, I wasn't taking from anybody except for. Yeah.
I tried, maybe Monday, cuz I gotta, I'll be gone as soon as I can get out of here, damn, leave.
Jim, you may have to resend that. Email. I did get it.
Okay.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
You didn't get it?
I didn't get it.
Oh, it sent it to you?
The email?
Yeah. Mine just maybe get, acted slow today too. Maybe I better see if.
You only wait, you only send it, I, well.
You go ahead and try to resend it, I think.
Alright.
Says I'm hooked on it.
What'd you spell your whole day now for, going to email?
Well, because, uh.
Makes sense, I hear you a lot. I like Markell, Markell. Uh, okay, same. It says it's gone.
Okay.
You should get it. Now, I started me a file on VRO forty-two.
Oh, that's a good idea.
So we'll have a, I'll keep all that together. Kelly's taught me some of that stuff, it's good.
Say I posted that.
I do listen once in a while, she tells me.
I like to keep my email, my email organized, any, I have tons of folders, because.
Yes.
We have to keep them, so you've gotta store them.
Somewhere.
I'm gonna have to dive through an entire.
That's right.
So our first interview, well, we have Great River at eleven.
Yeah.
First interview on the eve is at eleven thirty.
Mm-hmm. Did he have him open?
No.
So I was thinking.
It's, it's posted on your agenda as closed session.
I didn't know, he's a.
No, you don't.
I know all employees you wanna.
You don't keep that job open.
So I figured. Danger. Open.
Now, if you make a decision in closed session, then you have to put it in your open session.
Uh, yeah, I have to make a decision.
Jake, Ili Blisville's card contract on your desk there before you were here.
Yeah, I got it, right here.
Um, there was a mistake, and I, I made the note myself, so I would remember what's.
They chose too, too much road?
Yeah, they accidentally hide highlighted too much, so they're only actually doing this portion and this portion.
Oh.
Yeah.
And then she posted on the back of her that when their meetings are held, where they're held, and who their people are.
Nice, it is nice.
She wants to, if we start putting that kind of information on, why, she wanted me to be ready for it, so she, she put it on the back there.
There you go, Jake.
That'll work out great.
That'd be, I'll tell you what, that'd be, that'd be nice, you'd get, when they put all the information, contact.
Yeah.
Cuz instead of trying to figure out who's calling.
Louise is on top of it out there.
Especially when there's, sorry?
Louise is on top of it out there for sure.
She is. I don't think I've met Louise yet.
What's her last?
How. And I haven't met Miles Bailey yet either.
He's new, she said.
Randy told me that, uh, told me a little bit about it, I just haven't had a chance.
Is that, uh, is that Mike's? What's his last name, Mike Allen? Mike Allen, what is that there?
Mike Allen?
No, Louise is not his wife, no.
Oh, you're thinking of, uh, Darryl.
No, Linda's his wife.
Yeah, he lives on that side of the, I thought Mike lived, or he, no, he lives in town, he works at Full on.
Oh, yes, yes, Mike Allen works there full on, his, his family lives down by my road, I don't know where that's Mike's.
They're probably related somewhere, but Louise was married to Wayne, how, okay, that was her husband.
That's a different house, I think. Uh, they're probably, Kim.
Yeah, they're probably already.
Uh, but anyway.
She used to be a school bus driver back in the day.
Okay.
I'm gonna take these bills down to Amy while we're waiting.
Yes, yes, Cheryl actually, the neighbor of ours.
Cheryl and.
Jim.
Jim, see, Jim and I were schooled.
Oh, yeah? Super nice people.
Something to get to my, I know.
Met Cheryl when she was driving by, we was down there working, doing something, or driveway, she slammed on the brakes and stopped real quick. She's like, hey, I ain't got long talk, my husband's hanging from a tree trimming limbs. By the bobcat, drug him up with a rope.
Yeah.
She stayed there for fifteen, twenty minutes.
Hey, they like talk, I guarantee. All the Cheryl and.
Just hanging, just hanging out.
Yeah, yeah. I knew it was down there somewhere, they live, close to you.
This shit we need to ask. April seventeen, is who all has motor grinders in our town, in the townships?
So you guys start making a list.
Better make a list.
And I'll make a little agenda type thing, just with key points, so that we don't miss anything. So just start making a list of what you wanna talk about. I'm gonna write these checks downstairs and.
Okay. Yeah, that's something I sure need to get on early, you know, I have them.
Yeah.
And I think they'll be more receptive to talking. And I know the new ones will be very. So.
I'll bet it's packed. I'll bet it's packed.
I believe me told this year, I really, I think with all this, all this, with townships, I think now it'll bring, bring them out. And with the new changes, or the ones that had changes, I think.
That's good. We, we also need to.
I hate to see all of them changing one time, that's worse than. Cause then you get into this deal, oh, that's Louise. You wanna change it, can, all slowly learn.
Like the signs? I've had people tell them they, they just kinda got surprised with it and didn't know that we was gonna start charging. Yeah. So I mean, if we're gonna have any.
I thought that was put out to them. And when the first.
I don't know, I don't even remember knowing.
I, I don't really think of, well, when nine one one started all that, then that's where it cut it out. Cause it started out. Being people just like mine, I paid for mine, twenty five dollars, twenty whatever it was. I love the great deal, still they skip it. Cause nine one one indirectly reflected going down the road and they need to be on the positive side.
Oh, that's, that.
And a lot of people didn't like it, cause they weren't on the mailbox. And the big thing is.
We're not replacing all those, we're just replacing the ones for the street signs, right?
Yeah, that's one, and, and replace them, you know, be careful on them. If it's one all the time, they need to try to figure out.
Well, that was, that was it. They got it.
Cause that one was a four eleven or something, or a four, four, four or something.
Oh, I don't know.
Some ad, addresses that they're always stealing. And I can't help it, that's just. And like I said, we're all living going up Pollard.
Bad idea. Not a bad idea. But. They just wanna, kind of a heads up, you know, if we're gonna start doing that, that's fine, but we, you know.
Well.
Kind of pre-warning.
You had any issues with people moving fences, taking fences down and then putting them back up?
Yeah, what?
Taking fences down and then going to put them back up.
Closer to the road?
That is good.
Yeah, now, we, we had that, we had a guy, cause I put it out actually in our area. That if you take a fence down before you take it down completely, that, because a lot of them aren't closer than they should be. Once you take it down, and if, if it doesn't hold livestock, then it goes to where the line, like if there's twenty feet on each side, right now it's sitting at ten feet. So somebody comes along, takes it down.
You gotta.
You gotta put it back to twenty. And I, I surprised the guy, but he didn't get a hold of us. And he had put, I mean, a lot up. And we went there, cause I had, Rick, Rick actually came out, he was with me when we went out there. And I'm like, you know, guys, you gotta, you gotta get in touch with us because we, you know. The problem is, a lot of people don't know that. So when we were talking about educating, that's one thing we probably need to let people know. That, you know, their, their townships need to let people know if they move a. Now, if, if, if you leave it up and you take all your wire down, which you leave one, you don't have to move it.
You know where it's at.
Well, you don't have to move it back either.
The problem, the problem, and, and this is, kinda comes with roads, but you gotta remember, there's an easement on the roads. And you got, and the bad thing, you gotta go to every darn road and check it.
To get it different.
Just like five hundred, on our road, four or five hundred, where you turn down there, starts off, I think, thirty, whatever it is. And then it dropped four or five foot when they made a corner. And then it comes in. Well, the bad thing is, when it comes in like that, you don't have enough room to cut ditches.
Right.
And Leesville area down in there, you have a lot of them, and there are roads. And they need to talk to them, try to get an easement handled with, when they change. I, I know whenever I built over at farm, we, I just moved a foot back from where I had, cause I said, hey, they need more room. Cause they don't, you gotta get a ditcher, I knew about that. And can't help it. But that's, that's some things need to be talked about. And the thing is, roads move. That's the next thing.
Yeah.
When they're blading, if they're real close, they're almost short by four years now. They got ruined, that's why. Now, that fifty years, sixty years, a hundred years goes by, that road has moved in feet. And I know why, they don't ever get argument on that, where the road's supposed to be. Cause it can move and road blader guys, and road bladers is the one that do it.
Like a river.
Huh?
It's like a river.
That's right, that's what they have to do. And I understand it, I'm just saying, that's some of the issues you got. And that'll be, you've gotta handle them, and I, I don't know the answer to it. Because both of them are in the right, really. There was, well, I got a survey here, well. You've got an easement too. And if you got the easement down, it's much easier and you let them know how wide you're, if you let them know what the easement is, take it from the center of, just tell them, we go from the center of it, don't.
We used to, Mike used to go out, when anybody had, they'd get a hold of us. And I'd have Mike go out and lay it out, show them where it needs to be, he'd measure it out.
Yeah.
Keeps it simple, by the way. And he'd work with them, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, it failed. Jake?
Sorry?
Delivery to these, these recipients failed. Jake Bradley at Henry Como.
Reloaded?
Oh.
No, I, I just shut it up, just like maybe it reboot itself.
I know what the problem is.
Okay.
Or you know. I'm not gonna go there.
That works.
That tells you a lot about it. There, that's the reason why. And then it comes up again, it's what? Instead of Henry's, it's Como, it's Henry's. Somebody is not. That.
I can hear you.
Got it.
Got it?
Yep.
Somehow it was tied to there, Jake Bradley, you know, instead of Como, it's CP.
Oh.
It was a P. And I had to change it. P to O. Got it.
Alrighty.
Now, it should always work, because I had a problem before. I hope I changed it.
Yeah.
Or for somewhere you get in your contacts, it will change it.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way I'm getting, like the people, or contacts that, you know, a lot of them could come up when we're down? Like when Mike here? This one, it came up right.
Is that your email?
Well, that's where it said it, Jake Bradley. And I noticed on his first one, it was Jake, oh, well, now it's Henry Como, okay, then it's fixed. Cause it was Henry P.
I don't know, I am, um, I just got that kind of email, so I'm learning it too, I'm not sure.
Well, I think, I think it should have fixed it, right there. Cause now it's showing right, he got it that quick, that's where it should be.
So I'm, I'm not real familiar with Outlook email, honestly.
Well, I got, that's not mine, but usually there's a place for contacts.
Yeah, on mine, there's like little people up top.
Well, here's where you put your contacts in, you gotta go in and put them all in, I guess.
Yeah.
I'll have to do that.
Yeah, for some reason, my email up here is different than on my desktop, like I don't have my folders and I don't have my contacts up here.
See, that's why, don't you have Outlook on it? Or you have something different?
I just got Outlook downstairs, because this is a new email address with the Henry Como. And I haven't used Outlook this type of emails before.
I've got.
But I don't know why, if I'm opening my email here, why it doesn't look the same as it does when I open it downstairs.
I think you lose it because it's a new email address.
Well, no, I mean, it's the same email address, I have it where I can see it here, and I have it where I can see, just like you have it on your computer and your phone.
Yep.
Up here, it looks different, none of my folders are there, downstairs, all my folders are there. So I don't know how.
See, that's the reason why mine knows I have the trouble, cause my folders wasn't showing. But anyway.
Okay.
I did ask Chuck about that, but I haven't, I haven't got a solution to that yet.
Now, I'm gonna cut mine off. Everything I get casing, I'm just gonna start putting it over there, instead of having it. I don't wanna go back and try to send everything over again.
Okay.
Trying to find answers to your questions, Jake, but.
Oh, you're fine.
Dennis was gonna try to be here to learn too, wasn't he?
Yeah, Dennis will be here for the, um.
You want me to stay there?
Yeah. I don't know if he'll be here at eleven, but I know he'll be here for the interviews. He'll be here for the interviews.
Always. Okay. Do you cross for PP?
Oh, eleven oh one road. You know where Lambs is at? Lambs. That's probably Blue Lambs.
Okay.
There, I think.
It's not address.
Oh. It's them right there on the outskirts of.
Yeah, I know, outskirts of. Well, here's.
Is that everything?
Yeah, that's.
I'm gonna have to drive that way.
Well, I'm.
Had some free time, I thought I'd waste it up here, see it's the first one.
Well, you are, cause it got, guess what, it's gonna happen.
What?
We have to go in closed session. Interviews, interviews. What are you doing around, around, you working up here?
I'm not going up to my dad's till tomorrow, so.
Huh?
I'm not going to my dad's till tomorrow.
Oh, you are?
I had a couple check warrants for the LEPC to drop off with Amy.
Oh, okay.
So I come up here.
Did you have her checked in the vault, there was some, there's, there was some mail for LEPC in the vault downstairs.
Uh, Mercy, I think she picks it up for me.
I don't know about any of that, except for that there's mail in the vault for the LEPC in there. Just tell Amy that you, you have mail in there, she'll get it for you.
Kelly, I've got a two, four file, rolling file.
Yeah, I'm looking at one. I'm looking at a file, cause I need something for, so I'm, I'm trying to find one that I want. I don't want an ugly one.
Oh, boy.
Well, it's gonna be, it won't be seen, so you guys, as you can't see. That's gonna be.
I was gonna say.
I appreciate it.
I'm loading my dad's stuff.
Jake, you gotta raise your damn pommerosa out there. Talking about.
We're an accessory.
Huh? A successor. Pool? Is that underground?
No, that's above ground.
Cheryl Lynn or.
Say Cheryl Lynn or.
Other back, back up.
Basically. It's just for a class project.
Working right now.
Well, you got solar panels on the back?
On my shop.
Please, I worked pretty good on that. Okay.
Yeah. It's the, uh.
Helps.
Helps supplement the. It's for the, everything.
That's right, right.
Yeah, we don't have the battery or anything, it just kinda helps supplement.
Yeah, wallets running.
I see something like this up here Jim, but I don't want this color. Look at this. I want I want the light color, but if we put that down here. But I probably can, but that's what I'm thinking for back here. What do you think about that?
That'd be hard. That'd be good.
Something like that, where I have a couple drawers to put my stuff in. I don't care about the wood. I just want the color light to match this, but I don't I don't wanna put a metal one back there. I wanna put some some nice storage back there.
Uh, you need one the lighter color.
Yeah, I need one like this color, but I want it wide like that one that I just showed you.
Oh, yeah. What's that?
Oh, that's the one I just showed you.
Oh, that's true.
Do you think it'd be all right if that if I found something like that to put back here?
Yeah, I think I think that'd be good.
So we can put our copy machine on top or printer on top and then I'll have a couple, instead of me putting my stuff on the floor, I'll have a couple things to put on.
And you need a place to put stuff, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm stacking over here right now.
I tell you what. Yeah, you just.
If I put that little, if I get drawers on that.
Now, that'd be good enough, wouldn't it?
I think so.
I think that'd be good.
What are we gonna do with the nineteen seventies um mini fridge?
Well. It's worth it. We don't need one.
Can't even throw them things in the dumpster.
Huh?
They come after ya.
Freeze probably won't.
I'll stick it out in the hallway and they can they can they can all buy it. Wonder how much money it'll bring.
Yeah.
Fifty cents.
So.
Yeah. Pretty much.
Yo, be careful.
It's an antique. In antique, you can take it home and take it to the museum, whatever you wanna do.
I'm telling Kelly. When they closed out. Workforce fell nowhere. When it closed dead out, they had they had a bunch of desk and different things like that. I thought it was nice. A lot.
Casing your thing is on.
Casing. The biggest headache I had. And I don't have any place to use them. I tried to give away.
My email first.
A what?
Desk.
Oh, yeah.
I need a piano, dude.
Everybody's trying to get away a piano.
He ain't right.
But reading my dad's estate. It's moved into hospice.
I'm sorry.
Clearing the house.
Oh, that's that's, I tell you, that's the hardest thing here. Getting rid of it is hard.
Yeah, you can handle everything except that piano. If he wants a piano.
No. Is that a, is it?
It's a junk.
Upright?
It's junk.
An old one?
With spin, it's or, yeah, it's a spin.
You probably don't wanna tell people that if you're trying to get rid of it. Just a thought.
He's not selling me on it over here. You want a piano, it's junk.
Probably don't wanna tell people that if you're trying to get rid of it. Just kind of a thought.
I don't know. It works when you try to get someone to be vice chair of LEPC. You say, well, you're not gonna do any maintenance, it's a bigger head position. And they go, oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, did you have a bunch of people come up?
I'll I'll let Jake.
Jake?
Keep their report.
See the vice?
No, 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 I don't think. I don't know.
Hmm?
I'm not the vice. I'm nothing. I'm a board.
Well, I almost run in. I didn't meet.
Well, you're an official member, you know.
Huh?
Never voted you in. If you wanna be, let me know.
Mark, I think, is really thinking about it. I think I think he's on the verge. You can probably get him right in there.
That just means you get the vote of the meeting. You don't do anything else. So they need some of the sandwiches.
Tell you what. I think it's good. I'm not the first.
I'm not a.
Definitely.
I just wish they merged it.
Huh?
Just wish they merged the whole thing in the SEMA point. However, many LEPC direct regional directors they need. To do what I'm doing. I think you take five districts or five counties each or something, whatever. Full-time job rather than a minor district near the north or.
Good luck.
Yeah. Yeah, Merck doesn't wanna get merged in the SEMA.
In the way it sounds to me, a lot of Mercks is changing.
Well, they're on their uh. Fourth or fifth director of Merck since I's got on the LEPC. That's not great stability there.
Yeah. Well, it's kinda like Merck's venue. They're pulling all the guns away.
DPS web grants shut down.
They'll come back. They'll come back. Just get everything straightened around.
If it's needed.
Well, exactly. Exactly.
Said they really should get rid of Merck. Get rid of SEMA, in my opinion.
Well, SEMA and FEMA, that's the ones that come.
There's too much redundancy between SEMA and Merck. Too much redundancy between SEMA and Merck.
That's it.
Just create another level of bureaucracy. If they could take some of the people from Merck, put them in SEMA and do that work.
One of them need to go. It may be a lot of stuff. Okay. Kelly, how many did you say we had a possibility coming three hundred seven? No, over the. Six or over the meeting, jam check meeting.
Oh, a hundred and six?
Hundred and six.
I'm gonna be there. You probably better get cookies for five hundred.
Five hundred?
Just kidding. I'm just.
I don't think they should get any cookies since they bring in their car around now.
I tell you what, every time I I used to get in trouble, hell, they they wanted hot dogs and hamburgers. I told cookies about it. Anyway, I'll try to.
Yeah, I like hot dogs and hamburgers too.
What's wrong with that?
You only cook.
No, what time did it even start?
Six.
Six thirty. Six thirty.
Six.
Well, this could be an issue, guys.
This got me pretty close.
Well, when it was decided, it was decided at six.
I thought it was decided six oh.
I didn't decide the time.
What?
Getting all this down? You want transcript?
I got six thirty. Right here.
I don't know why you have six thirty.
I think that's what we decided. But it might, if the humidations went out at six, guess what?
I like that.
Is that what the humidations say? It says?
Yeah, I have it. I have it down at six o'clock too.
Okay.
Correct. Hmm, it's okay. We we can we can handle until six thirty.
That's right.
We got this.
I'll be good.
Oh, you got her out of the city that day?
That's the day she gets a shot. And if you're out there, it's like a break. Break her back. I thought, boy, I had everything planned out, but it'd be great to run over and pick up all my cookies to be fresh, come back. Ah, she'd make it anyway. She said it shouldn't be a problem. I got one forty and usually they get her.
Where are you gonna go?
Huh?
Where are you gonna go?
Salute has over.
On Independence on forty?
No, over on the. Off Noll down in there.
Oh, you're okay.
I got one in Kansas. It's pretty easy. It's just matter of fact. And if I get her up early, I'm, one time I got in thirty minutes early. If I get her up early, maybe, cause he's pretty good about going and getting her up. And Nelson, that's our doctor. He's, well, he's Nelson's office, isn't he? Yeah, he's real good. He's been real awesome over the years. And these shots has helped or something, cause she's got a back that's very dry or. Wet, hers is. What's the worst one? Usually shot still well, that's dry. Even this one, it's it's improved her vision or something. It's bigger. I think that coffee's it was bad. I wonder. We just have one one copy. That is a three.
Mm-hmm.
First step, I would last. Little baby cat last night.
Late.
Took over that meal.
Get it over with.
Yeah. Her last step for the cats. The way you had one, she must have read the book that she got. Coming around.
I hate cows with a.
You know where.
I did. We had them. I did. I'm like, you know what? Between working all men coming home and trying to mess with cows. What had them?
Mm-mm, yeah.
My wife just, she loves. Burn Jeff vote back. Of course Jeff shows up and I show him. And I gotta show Saturday. That's when the kids start showing up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They've done it pretty good. It's been been good for them. They've done real well and they showed. There's a Denver that showed. They'd say it was raw, raw all the time. He was in sheet out and. And stay stay fair out of all students. They've done really good. But Jeff does a lot of AIs and differences. And he has. He does a lot of indoor plant plants now. And that's when that's where he does best, because he just is, he has fourteen or so that he works with. Oh, they come out with some dents.
Good, yeah.
Now ours is just stock cows. The land likes them. I probably gotta cut them. And she needs to cut them more. I did have us today. Dennis, how's your day going? Are you in there?
It's always a good day.
Kelly's waiting. He's up for. It's live out.
Yeah, burning out what she can.
What's that smart people rant about?
Do what?
Yeah, all the smart people over there.
I'm just happy to hear that.
No breakdown?
That's not good.
Do what?
No breakdown.
I'm gonna ask a question. You don't wanna answer this. Now, so far things to open. Except the pickup and this getting work done.
The what?
It's been it's been getting work going for four months now.
What pickup's that?
Going truck. The injector went out of the. Uh, fuel line for the DEF system.
Oh.
So it's it's one of our older trucks.
Gotcha.
And I took it out to Jason's back in December and told him whenever he gets to it, I don't care to tell him all season. So then I had to call him the other day and tell him, Owen season's here, Jason. But now he called me the other day and told me that it, he just about had it done himself.
Oh, God.
He didn't wanna get done too quick.
No.
Bobble right next.
Ask the year.
Uh, do we have anything to talk about before we go into the first session?
Yeah, Jake with Gregory Rivers.
Oh, yeah.
He'll hit me here in just a minute. I've seen him pulling one out.
Okay, be a better way for him.
But, uh, Kelly, uh, your speed limit sign's been removed. And what they're calling speed bumps are just washboards. They're not speed bumps.
Was it in White Oak Township?
Do what?
Was it in White Oak Township?
Yes, it is White Oak Township.
Because Darwin called me and said, I can't find a speed limit sign. So apparently it's, it already been taken down.
I just went there and then went to the bridge and came back here. But, uh, it was right there. You turn off K Highway, it's right there. So, uh, it was an old mode outside, uh, that somebody busted the tail spur off. Grabbed the fence post and put it over top.
Darwin's speed limit sign, huh?
Twenty-five mile an hour.
Well, there you go, Mark. There's the answer to that.
So, yeah.
But there's no speed bumps in the road that we should be concerned about.
They're, they're just washboard areas.
I'll let Darwin know you came and took the sign down.
Yeah, it's back there and back. If you want, you can have it again. That's good. Very much good to it. But it's been resolved.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, we can get Jake right quick. Just started on the areas.
Uh, Jake, you could have a disgruntled, uh, customer here area. He's unhappy with the thought that we went through and changed the public road zones to private road zones.
Yeah, I've got a phone call. I got to return. I've just been waiting to get some information.
You didn't have that.
It's because of when we cleaned that area down there from the C special. Uh, I explained to him this morning that it should have never been public road. They should have never been taken care of it. But accidents happen and it's been correct to go.
I bet he wasn't. Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, how you doing this morning? Been a while.
Yeah, it has been.
You folks doing all right?
Morning, sir.
Brett King.
Brent is your inspector on your BRO.
Oh, yes.
Right down there in Europe. So, brought him along with us just to give you guys a project update on that.
Yeah, give you a little update there. This is over White Creek, uh, White Oak Creek there. Uh, they're hoping pre-bore tomorrow and then dry pile Monday, maybe Tuesday at the latest, so. Yes, yep, that's the one he sent out. I just wanted to hand a look at that and introduce myself. And, uh, the weather's held up their drill rig and it was supposed to start Monday, but it kept holding them up. So, but they should be moving in later this afternoon, hopefully start pre-bore tomorrow on that. And hopefully dry pile on Monday or Tuesday.
They'll move on pretty good as long as the rain stays away anyways. And then, um, Zach, our project engineer on this project, he asked me to bring up some documents for you guys. Um, and technically you've already signed this. This is more for, uh, MoDOT's reference. This is the right-of-way easements for your next BRO.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Was it Southeast Ninety-first Street, I believe?
Yes.
So this is a finalized right-of-way agreements with all the property owners. So this is just a form that we could submit to MoDOT saying that we're good to go to proceed. And then we'll wait on, uh, construction authorization.
Okay.
Uh, once MoDOT gets that.
Okay.
So that's really what I wanted to meet you guys for, for that. I figured since we're here, it might as well.
Well, I'd see that one can get along too.
Yes, yes, exactly.
That's one means of it.
Yep, and while I'm here, I'll get a few things recorded, uh, for right-of-way easements. And, uh, yeah, hopefully we get going on that project fairly quick. Do you guys have any questions or concerns or have you folks been out to look at the project yet? No?
Which one we talking about now?
The one out by your.
I've been out there every day.
Yep.
And it's just up there just a few minutes ago.
What do you think?
It's been long, like you said, weather's held them up for a few days. But, I mean, we got some good weather coming up. Hopefully they can get back on track.
Yeah, that's the plan right there.
I think they will, once, once they get this year overgrounded, I think it's a long one.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Well, Dennis, this is Brett. He's the one inspecting that project. Dennis, he's the, he's the boss. He's the main road bridge guy for that area here, so.
That's great.
If you have any questions, you can, I'll give you your number and we'll chat through them.
Yeah.
Yeah, look forward to getting going on this next project and getting this one finished up as quick as we can.
The Ninety-first Bridge, is that the one over by Walmart?
Ninety-one, yeah. Well, go Walmart.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, that one's here in town?
Just right out.
Outside of town. By Walmart.
I think I looked at that one last year.
Yeah, I was riding them, could turn there by the cemetery. Go down by the cemetery is where it's at. Just drive by it and keep going.
Okay, good, good to know. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. This is for you. You guys can keep that, just progress report on that one out there by your. Um, whoever's, whoever's the LPA responsible?
That'd be him.
Yeah, and of course, like I said, you guys have any questions or concerns? Please feel free to reach out. Yes, ma'am.
Where do I go to record questions here?
Um, it's just down on the first floor, the same door you came in, by security, right there, Recorder Dean's office.
Okay, awesome.
And what's Brett's last name?
Kane.
Kane?
Is certain.
C-A-I.
Kane?
C-A-I.
Okay.
If you'd like, I've got a call. Yeah. I get warning desk in case he needs to get a hold of me first.
I'd, I'd bring in the area, do an inspection for me in Europe, um, just to save on budget and drive time for this project. I asked him to start doing it for me, because the bridge is a long path outside of Europe. If he's there, it just makes sense for him to do it anyway.
Okay.
And once he gets it.
Yeah, exactly.
You want.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
It's awful close anyway. He might as well just.
I mean, it doesn't make sense for one person to drive past a job and have another one come and go an hour or two away to go to it and.
See, now he's only fifteen minutes away. He can just run all that.
Exactly. So, yeah, it just made sense that way. I'm busy up there anyways in Kansas City, so.
Are you?
Yep, it worked out.
That's good.
Yeah, the winter we had, it pushed all of our projects back like two, three months.
Oh, really?
Like all at once. So here come May, June, and even, you know, Jeff's city office, like everything's starting at once now.
Really?
So we're about to get super busy, but much rather have it that way than the other way.
That's good.
Yes, it does. So.
Okay, well.
All righty.
Glad you all come by and gone.
Yeah, thanks for having us and good luck with your next meeting. It sounded important.
Yeah, we got to interview.
Interviews for road bridge.
And that stuff.
That's always fun.
Always a process.
Yep.
I used to work in Cole County Road and Bridge.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Yeah, I worked there for ten years and I inspected the last, uh, three and a half to four years while I was there.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, so. Worked under engineer Matt Preger and also, uh, their past engineer, Eric Langler. So, and he's their director now, so.
How long have you been with Gregory Rivers?
Uh, since December the first.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, I know. Uh, you know, Brian Boyside would probably, uh, I worked with him as well, fast and stuff, so. And Jason Sibley, one of the principals there at Preger, so.
All right, that's good.
You're going to the Retorers office?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll just, I'll go down with you and get a copy from downstairs.
Don't worry, don't worry, that works.
You didn't get it.
There is a copy machine.
Pleasure seeing you guys again. You guys have a good one.
Y'all too.
Thank you all very much.
Brett, what just said? You guys visit, try to start over there at Ninety, Ninety-first?
Uh, that all depends on when MoDOT gives us our CE obligation. Once we get that CE obligation from MoDOT, um, you know, we got the bidding process, the bid opening and all that stuff and awards. So it'll be a little bit of time for it to start.
Okay.
I'll have Zach give you guys an update as soon as he gets his paperwork to MoDOT. At least give you guys an idea of what's going on in the schedule.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a good one.
Any of the guys after? Brett Kane, Brett Kane. He must live at Kane's, too. What time were they supposed to be? What time was he supposed?
Eleven. Eleven thirty was first one.
It was eleven? I thought it was eleven.
Nope, eleven thirty. Kelly's got posted notes on my sheet here telling them eleven thirty, eleven forty-five, and twelve.
Yep, yep, you're right. I just saw it. Yep, eleven thirty. Okay. That's good. All right, Dennis, what do you want to talk about, uh, the Seventeenth Township? Do you have a bunch of things you want to talk about?
Not a whole bunch. I'm just gonna give them that data of what we accomplished last year. Find out if there's any interest in anybody, uh, wanting to rent a motor grader from the Happy Valley. Because that's where you need to start. Because if you ain't gonna get no nibbles there, then you ain't, uh, there ain't no sense about it. Of course, the one that needs the water spread part probably won't be at the meeting and never is.
Well, there's some others on there now. There'll be.
Yeah, and Brad got back on there, but the other two got voted, got replaced, so.
That may change.
And Kelly, that reminds me, when you get an updated list of, uh, new people on the new townships, could you send me a copy of it so I'll have it so I know who called, please?
She's probably got it done. Don't throw it at me.
Bet you threw that out there, because I think she's getting ready to.
I know she's kind of reaching, although that bucket could have hit her.
Yeah.
Oh, hey.
Before we get started on this stuff, Mark, you got anything for me? Jake, you got anything for me?
No, I'm topping ahead of them.
Jim?
No, they're getting ready to start on this.
Are they, they're gonna start Mon, I think Monday on the nighttime operations on the Hamburger Alley.
Hamburger Alley? I haven't heard it called that since my dad.
Where is hamburger alley?
That's where McDonald's and all them fast food joints are.
McDonald's?
That's Hamburger Alley.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's a location.
Well, everlast, they can't find. They got chewed up probably twenty feet to thirty feet back from the highway and then.
That way they can get some depth right there to approach.
Yeah. So that's what they was doing. But anyway.
Boss lady, you got anything for me?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
How long are they gonna be out there at the light? Do you know?
Probably two, maybe three days.
Okay.
Because they're just going, uh, about a tenth of a mile past Slurvers.
Oh, no, I meant up here at the light by the hospital, sorry.
Oh, that's a three-phase deal. That's gonna be a, that's gonna be a three-month deal probably.
What are they really gonna accomplish now? What are they changing? That turn lane on the left?
They ain't changing nothing. They're replacing the concrete that they replaced last year because it failed and was crumbling up.
Oh, crap.
See, that's all they're doing though, right?
As far as I know, that's all they're doing.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, that turn in, when you turn left, you have to watch what you're doing. And you can be in the turn lane of the other side. Going left.
Yeah.
Because it's pretty close right there.
From what I understand, they're just replacing the concrete that they replaced, uh, last year, I think it was, or year before. It's all failed and is crumbling up, so, uh.
They're going to eight inches.
The.
Is that what they're going to now?
What were they?
Two.
I was gonna say.
Four or six.
Depends on how level it was underneath. Are they gonna hit any other spots? Heading towards the light or is it just right there at the intersection?
Just basically right there at the intersection. Uh, it goes probably a hundred feet to the east, uh, and to that one lane probably, I'm gonna say fifty feet to the west. And then, uh, all the way across.
Okay.
So.
Where's the park?
Jake, is your, um, Southeast Ninety-one, is that Clayton Township or Bethlehem?
That would be Bethlehem.
Bethlehem.
I know they're making a cluster for me to try to get in and out of the shop with Clinton and stuff.
Yeah.
Because we gotta go all the way to Sedalia Avenue and back around to Fifty-two. Or we gotta go down Moore Street and creep out there.
It could be the reason why people's, well, not, traffic's liable to pick up going down Booth Road now.
Mm-hmm, yeah. You heard that.
Still don't know what to do with that.
Huh?
Still don't know what to do with that. I gotta get ahold of TJ today. Are we just waiting for eleven thirty now?
Yeah.
Gotta go to the bathroom?
Nope, didn't want it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, good, good.
Let's check.
I asked, uh, Brittany Mitchell, you might want to. I asked Brittany Mitchell, you might wanna have a say on this too. But I asked her if, working on approaches, if we could fix them, so MoDOT bill. Said that they did and that with different, uh, different counties in the past and they will reimburse the materials, but not the labor. Wouldn't be able to do the labor. Makes it kinda hard to do that. Just thinking, they're never gonna get around to fixing the approaches.
But if, and they'll pay for the material.
They'll pay for the ground.
Yeah.
The labor we, uh.
Base, base on, we best put approaches with it, something packed down.
I like.
Me, I can get screenings.
Yeah, screenings. That's what I, either one, just long as.
Pack in there nice and tight.
Yeah. That'll, and that'll fit hard.
Is that something you'd be interested in having your guys do?
I got some, uh.
Well, you got extra people, don't you?
Yeah, I got all kinds of extra people.
Surprise townspeople, we did.
You're just, you're just the comedian today, aren't you?
Township thing? I mean, you guys have got.
Yeah, we did it.
You got a guy, but most of our people, all they've got is their part-time blade guy. And all they've got is a motor grader.
Yeah.
And then you're putting twenty-five feet out in the road.
Yeah, yeah. If you box play, it'd be the best.
I mean, I, right now I'm catching up on culverts and, uh, um, it's something that I could, uh, put a couple guys do it, uh, and working on, but, uh, I need some kind of P O or something, uh, that way we're billing it to them and, you know, I don't wanna put a bunch of my money tied up in base rock and my budget be gone.
Or my base.
Well, if we're interested in that, I'll, uh, get old Brittany to find out.
You make a deal with her that they pay for stuff that we pick up and it's boring.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'm, I'm good with helping some of the townships that.
That'd be a good deal. That'd be good to talk about townships, that we.
Yeah.
I know.
I knew that before.
I know that, uh, Davis Township, they've been calling Springfield.
Oh, yeah.
Out here and, and nothing's getting done.
Well, that's definitely not gonna get done now since they're gonna get ready to start mowing here.
That's right.
And they got some bedrocks out there on Eighteen Highway. It's about ten inches deep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So they need to think about fixing some bedrocks. Uh, between whoever runs the moat up.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll tell you what, when you get that fucked up, that'd be.
Well, that's, that's what the engineer Brittany.
Come up with?
That's what she told me. She's like, they've worked out several different counties like this in the past, but not able to reimburse the labor, but could pay for material cost. For what?
Whatever you get, you get it in writing.
Yeah.
And, and they need to pay the bill as Rockford, cause I don't wanna pay it out of my budget.
Once you have it dropped.
And then, and then have to reimburse because I don't get that reimbursement till next year.
No.
So I'll be spending my whole budget on approaches and not have no money.
Okay, I'll find that out for sure.
I think they dropped it in our building. Why couldn't they drop it? I mean, you gotta grab alongside at your building, just to.
I keep, I keep a couple loads.
I'd have them drop it there. Whatever you think, you tell them what you think you're gonna need. Let, that way you don't have any expense going to pick it up or anything. Just fix it.
I, you know, I'd, I'd want screenings and I'd want a hundred tons to drop off.
That'd be the easiest thing.
And then.
You can put out a gun? All right.
It was.
Make room for a hundred.
Deliver.
Okay. You can make room.
And then as we get into, we'll call them up, say we need a little help.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's something we need to find out what township's even interested in getting.
Yeah.
Approaches worked on.
Yeah.
Because you don't wanna.
I don't wanna spend their money if they're not.
Exactly.
Wanting to spend their.
I don't think you'll have any trouble getting people.
But we're gonna have to get some of them done because even all the townships.
Everyone would jump at it.
Yeah.
Uh, oh.
So.
I want, I want, I got one question asked on DC's out there. Did you go, have you seen that little man look like he was a little bit? Running all that company?
I'll go ask, okay, I did.
I noticed that the day we had, but I don't know how much rain we had, but I seen where it looked like it made a little gully there.
Well, it's gonna make a gully right there on the, as you turn onto it, it's gonna be on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be right, it should start creating a big ditch right there past the cone.
Well, we need to check that if it, and head down to the ditch.
That or we're gonna have to go in there and ditch it. That way we can funnel the water into a ditch.
Yeah.
And keep it from worship out there.
That's what I was gonna have to just.
I'll look at it, give you some.
I drove by there and kinda, I didn't get out the hook, I just, I was. Now, I can't believe any of the townships and they're not wanting to do that. That'd be just, that'd be a big plus. If they'll, okay, that's good.
I mean, it's.
Brittany's sure pretty nice.
Yeah, she's real nice.
She's, she'll work for you.
Is she the new engineer now?
Yep.
Yeah.
I think she'll do a good job.
I think she's on maternity leave right now, but.
Is she back?
No.
I talked to.
She might be, I don't know. I just sent.
Cause I gave her your email.
She sent me an email and I sent her one back and then she sent this one back to me, so.
And she may be just like duty now.
Might be. I know she was going on leave whenever the last tech meeting.
Out there at the tech, she was gonna be gone for six weeks.
Yeah.
When Alan was there.
I don't remember when the tech meeting was. I'll have to look it up.
Hello.
Who was the old area engineer out there?
Becky Bolts was one of them. And she was the.
Yeah.
Who? She's the one that looked like she had, she was a Harley rider.
Oh, yeah, I vaguely remember her now.
And then, uh, I ain't sure who took over after her.
Julie Zebra, who taken over her job now, but then she's still.
Julie retired.
Yeah.
And then I was dealing with the tailor, uh, some or another for a while. But now they got me dealing with another person that's taking care of all of, uh, Casey or Basin Regional.
Zack?
Yeah.
Zack.
Zack Young.
Zack, Zack.
I'm having to deal with him, with him now with all my, uh, soft match and stuff.
All right. Zack should be all right. Hold on.
So, at least he'll return my, uh, emails and stuff. I mean, I'd send Taylor an email and not hear nothing for a month.
No, that's.
I'd call her and get a voicemail. At least most of the time she'd not hear nothing about it. So she was over at work or she just?
Julie was a real good zebra.
Oh, she was best to work with.
And, uh, and I think Brittany will be off good as long as she'll, but she'll probably move on. That's trouble. You get somebody good.
She's the young.
They'll move right on out.
Yeah.
She, she, she's got potential to move straight through the motor guy.
And they'll move her right.
And out the door.
Yeah, they'll move her right on out. Then, then she'll be hard for Gray Rivers or somebody. That's what happens. I wouldn't say.
That, there, there for a while, uh, uh, it was funny. It seemed like every time somebody'd get a promotion, a moat up would move up.
Yeah.
It seemed like once they got to a certain position, uh, the city of Springfield was grabbing them and taking them and, uh, paying a lot more money. We lost, they lost a lot of good engineers.
Yeah, they did.
Different people to, uh, Springfield.
Mm-hmm, they did.
I think that Becky Bolts is the one that's over tech now.
I, Becky has something to do with it.
Because when we went out for the construction project, she was there.
She was there at, uh.
And then Shannon Kellner, she was out there.
Yeah. I'll have to.
That's one for me.
She used to be over the construction office.
Yeah, I never knew her last name. Okay.
Thank you.
So she works for Casey now?
No, she's still with MoDOT. She has something to do with, uh, uh, she keeps moving up, so.
She's moved up the ladder ways.
She, she's having to do something with all these bridge projects that's gonna start this year, next year in Henry County.
Oh, really?
There's seven of them in Henry County that is gonna get, uh, replaced or rehabbed.
Yeah.
Like, uh, the one on Z Highway, U Highway Bridge.
Oh, that's, both of those needed.
Um.
You know.
Well, one on Y Highway south of Windsor.
The little single lane?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the one north of Windsor on Two Highway.
Okay.
The one out here on Eighteen.
Which one?
The first one out, uh, before you get to Christian Academy.
Yeah.
Uh, that one there.
Yeah. There's, there's gonna be a bunch. In fact, we got a. That's a minute that you'll come through Casey. I don't think, I didn't do my emails, but that.
Oh, yeah.
You get a list of all of everything. Attack it.
There's one on, uh, Thirteen South Northbound, just north of Z Highway.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
That old bridge there's getting replaced.
Wow.
You know, I wonder if they, why they didn't, like down there on Debbie where that bridge is, Samara, and then they drive off the sign, so they track their edge of the road.
Oh, that's a box called.
Yeah, they did box kill it.
That is an aerospace.
I wonder, and I just wonder if they're gonna replace that one there, did it ever.
I doubt it.
I doubt it. They'll wait until.
If it was gonna be replaced, it would've already been replaced. That way it had time to settle.
See.
I bet you money.
See, that's why they went on Z Highway and this like this last year and replaced every covert on Z. Because it's getting resurfaced and widened next year.
Couple too many, uh, incidents?
I think so.
Dump truck.
But what they're, but what they're doing is gonna be the same problem you have out here on Fifty Two. Uh, you know, they dig down four inches and lay four inches of asphalt in there, but there's no base underneath it. And it's just gonna fall apart. Lock this out here for the fertilizer plant, after fertilizer plant.
Yeah.
That's my, strictly my opinion. My opinion only. I'm not running them bloody down. Just plenty more for the game.
Dennis back. Say, uh, the one there on Y, the single lane, are they gonna go wider? Do you know?
That was just gonna be rehab, so I don't know.
Doubt it.
Okay.
Man, what a shame.
And the one out here on Eighteen's just rehabbed.
Oh, okay.
Uh, they might, you know, keep one lane open while they're working on the other lane, but it's gonna be a problem situation.
Yeah.
Especially for parents taking their kids to Christian Academy.
Yes.
You think they got.
I don't know.
You think they gotta, you know, they go out those roads down forty, it's running backtrack to it, but then I get more phone calls.
Somebody can make some money with the ferry business down there crossing the creek.
We gotta go into closed session before.
Grab kids off there. Walk.
Get on some floaties.
We're going closed session.
Time? Yep. Do we need to make motion or is it just?
Just second. Go ahead and make the motion.
No, I'll make the motion to go to closed session.
Oh, okay. Motion and main second and going.